Welcome to the Board of Education, meeting for Weld County School District Six on this, the ninth day of March 2020. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Present.
Mrs. Mash?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Mrs. Mueller?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Mr. Tally?
Present.
Seven members present.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. One of the things we talk about a lot at District Six is empowering our students. And last week was National School Breakfast Week. Everyday Greeley Evan School District Six Nutrition Services work hard to make sure that our students have a well-balanced breakfast and a great start to their day. And what we know about this is that students who start their day with breakfast have higher levels of achievement in reading and math. They score higher on standardized tests. They have better concentration and memory. They're more alert and maintain a healthy weight. And going along with that, I wanted to make the announcement that our nutrition services, the people who serve those kids every day, are having two hiring events. One on Thursday, March 12th, from 9:00 to 11:00, and another on Thursday, March 19th, from 1:00 to 3:00. And so if you are interested in serving our kids and working with kids, it's an incredibly fulfilling way to spend your day. And so please check that out on our website. We also, this meeting, wanted to give you a quick update on just what's been happening legislatively and what we're watching at the Capitol. And one of the things we are very much hoping is that our legislature approves a $100 million buydown on what's called a budget stabilization factor. Many of you know that Colorado is underfunding and has been underfunding education for the last 10 years. Our district alone is down $200 million. That's $200 million that the state was supposed to provide to our district and has not managed to do. And so we are hoping for that buydown on the budget, what's called a budget stabilization factor, so that we can continue to serve our students the best we can. We are now to the portion of our meeting where we hear people desiring to speak before the Board of Education. And so tonight, first, we have Mr. Josh Wayne Scott. He's going to be speaking to us about caring adults in children's lives. So I want to invite Mr. Wayne Scott to the podium. You'll have two minutes, Mr. Wayne Scott, and I'll remind you, we won't respond to you, but someone from our administrative team will speak with you after you speak.
All right. Thank you so very much for having me this evening. I do appreciate it. My name is Josh Wayne Scott. I am a proud parent in District Six. I am also a proud teacher at Maplewood. And I just wanted to review some of the things that we've talked about. I brought up the fact that we talked about caring adults and what they have in children's lives. We found out that they are able to help complete tasks better if they have a caring adult, remain calm and faces of challenges, show interest in learning new things, engage in physical activity, participate in after-school programs, and be engaged in school. That led to asking, well, what makes a successful adult? Successful adults, the science has shown, there are three specific areas that have really done that for us. We've found support responsive relationships that can be engaged in with children and adults, core life skills that have to be taught through an adult that they feel valuable with, and then reducing stress in those children's lives. Those are three ways that they have found to increase the successfulness of adults in their lives. The science has also come to find that there are ways that we can identify and look at children who might be in need of additional supports. They've done this through what's called an ACE factor. An ACE score is determined by, they take 10 pieces, 10 factors, physical, sexual, verbal abuse, physical and emotional neglect, parents who are an alcoholic, a mother who's been abused, family members in jail, a family member with a mental illness, or a parent that is missing, whether that's through divorce, whether that's through abandonment, or whether that's through death. And primarily, students and children that are affected with these ACE scores primarily come from areas of poverty. Okay, so that sucks. I'm really sorry. What do we do about that? How do we measure the impact that our teachers have on these students and these children? This is where the real problem lies. How do we, as a society and as a system, work to value the piece of growing up that is most vital to long-term success? How many children do I and my colleagues need to change the trajectory of their lives? One? Two? Do I need to do one a year? Do I need to have 100 kids before I'm considered successful? That's the question I'd like to leave you with, and I'll be able to present some research around that next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne Scott. The next person desiring to speak before our board tonight is Mr. Lucky Luciano. And he is speaking to us on the topic of Maplewood Elementary's Student Care Closet. So, Mr. Luciano, thank you for being here this evening. You will also have two minutes, and we won't respond to you, but know that somebody from our team will follow you and speak with you afterwards.
I need help putting this down. Do you want this down? Thank you, Honorable School Board Members and Dr. Pilch. I am here to talk to you about Maplewood Elementary's Care Closet. My name is Lucky Luciano, and I am a fifth grader scholar at Maplewood. I also am a member of our after-school program. At Maplewood, we believe we are a community and a family of intellectual learners. The Care Closet is for scholars and families that are in need. We provide items such as breakfast bars, coats, mittens, toothbrushes, toothpaste, chastick, lotion, soap, deodorant, and shampoo. We believe every person should be able to have what they need. For example, if we can provide those items for our students, they will feel cared for and they will know they are an important scholar in our academic community. Moreover, when we are able to help others and provide even the littlest things they might need, it makes us feel grateful for the things we have. Like many places, we have a lot of need at Maplewood. Hence, if you might have extra items, or if you would like to donate items, we would really appreciate it. Again, we are a community of learners at Maplewood, and we believe, as Bob Marley did, unity for all mankind and one love for all race. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Luciano. We appreciate you coming here tonight and what you're doing at Maplewood Elementary. Next item of business is our work session report. And so, Ms. Crane, will you give the public an update on what we've been doing for the last couple hours?
Yes. Board of Education President Michael Matthews began the work session with comments and updates from board members and briefly reviewed the calendar of upcoming events. The board discussed attendance at District Six graduation ceremonies and provided advice to the superintendent about the new strategic plan. Ms. Mash provided an update on the Colorado Association of School Boards' Winter Legislative Conference, and the board discussed community engagement. The board concluded the work session with a debrief.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. We're now to our superintendent's report. So, Dr. Pilch, will you give us your report, please?
Thank you, President Matthews. And I apologize, I am going to break protocol.
Yay.
Lucky, will you please join me up here? Because these board members need to shake your hand and meet you personally. So, well, he's making his way up here. Come up here for a second. Come up here by the superintendent for a second. Okay, hello, I'm Dr. Pilch. So I want to tell you about Lucky. He called my executive, our executive assistant, Ms. Crane, and said, "I want to give a board report." So he got him signed up, himself signed up to speak tonight to the Board of Education to share this information, because he is so excited about the work that they are doing at Maplewood and the work he's helping to lead. So congratulations to you. You are a great future leader, and I would not be surprised if one day you don't sit in a chair like this with a group like this. So I know these board members want to take a picture with you. So, we're going to let them do that and shake your hand and tell you thank you. Thank you for being a great scholar.
I'm going to keep on this side so I don't have to stand in front of the class as you. Perfect. You're good. You're good. Greg, is everybody ready?
You know, along with Lucky tonight at our board meeting are some of his teachers from Maplewood Elementary School, his principal and his assistant principal, and I just know you all are so proud. And I thank you, I thank you all for your leadership and your support and for bringing this young man to our school board meeting tonight, to remind us why we do the work we do. So, thank you. Oh, I have the rest of my... You got me all distracted thinking about why we do the work we do, right? So I first want to recognize our school social workers here in District Six. A little birdie told me that March is National School Social Work Month. So, congratulations to our social workers and thank you so much to the work our social workers do every single day in our schools. We have been able to increase the number of social workers in District Six due to some very generous grants, community grants, as well as some statewide grants. And I will tell you, I did some listening sessions with elementary and K-8 principals here in the last couple of weeks, and every listening session, they talked about the importance of social workers in their schools and that the importance of that support for the social, emotional well-being of students and for staff, even though they're not hired to do that work, they often find themselves doing that work. So, thank you and a huge shout-out to social workers here in our community and our school district. So, thank you to them. I thought you all might mention several of us were in schools last week, reading on Dr. Seuss's birthday. For, I think it's Read Across America Day to celebrate Dr. Seuss and his writings for children. And I was asked to read to a kindergarten class and a fifth-grade class. And I will be honest with you, I was a little nervous about the fifth graders, because I thought, are they really going to want me to read Dr. Seuss to them? Well, I read to the kindergartners first and read that I can read with my eyes closed. It was a lot of fun, and the kindergartners were delightful and a great audience and just very, very smart kids. And then I went into a fifth-grade classroom, both at Scott Elementary, where we read The Sneetches. And they got the message, and you know, it was a perfect choice for that class, because it really is a message about wanting to be like somebody else and judging others by their appearance. And those fifth graders got the message, and we had a great conversation, and they asked me to read another story before I left. So, that was great fun, and I was so proud of our students here in District Six. And just, they really are deep thinkers, even when you're reading Dr. Seuss to them. So, the board members are nodding their heads, because many of you've had the same experience. I want to announce that tomorrow morning is our Success Foundation Breakfast at 7:00 a.m. at Northridge High School. Our foundation has been so supportive of us in our blended learning initiative, and now they are really pushing out the Smart Labs, the Creation Station Labs at our elementary and middle school. So, they will be fundraising for that tomorrow at the breakfast. And then finally, I better talk a little bit about COVID-19 coronavirus. So, like many of you, the school district has been working to put plans into place and to make sure the plans we have are proactive and not as much reactive, and are the plans to keep our staff and students safe. We do have a district-wide contagion plan or communicable disease plan that all staff have been trained again on to ensure that we have best practices in place at all of our school and district sites. We are doing additional disinfecting on our school buses every evening. And then we have worked with our custodial staff to ensure that they understand that, especially now, we need to be extra vigilant around cleaning and especially surfaces that are touched frequently by students and staff. We've also asked our staff to work with students on hand washing. They're nodding their heads. On hand washing and reminding students about good hand washing practices and reminding staff the importance of hand washing. We are in regular communication with the Weld County Public Health Department, as well as the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. We will be taking part in a call where we're just listening, but twice a week where we're receiving information from the state emergency management offices and from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. So, should there be an outbreak in northern Colorado, we will work closely with those agencies to make the determination on how to best handle that outbreak here in our school district and follow protocols as recommended by the folks who truly are the experts at this, which is our county health department and our Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. We would recommend that folks with questions, families, and staff go to the Centers for Disease Control website. That information is updated daily by around 12 o'clock noon. So, we recommend you go there. That's where we're getting our information, is from the CDC website, as well as the experts I've mentioned before. I know there's a lot of concern and care around this, and I will tell you that overall, we are seeing folks pretty healthy right now. We're not seeing even a lot of influenza in our schools right now, which is a good sign. And, you know, it's a good opportunity for all of us to remember just those good habits of good hand washing, coughing or sneezing into a Kleenex or into the corner of our elbow, and not touching our faces. I mean, that is so hard to do. Right now, your faces are all itching, because I said, "Don't touch your face." But it's a good time for us to remember that. Hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol if you don't have the availability of washing with soap and water. So, hopefully, we will have good news, or at least stable news, by the time our school board comes back together around the coronavirus. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next item of business is to approve the agenda for tonight. And so this is an action item that requires a motion, if someone would offer that.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda for tonight? Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. The next item of business is to approve our consent agenda. And this also is an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Ms. Crane, will you give us a vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. The next item of business is some revisions to the DJE bidding procedures policy. This, too, is an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District Six revises DJE bidding procedures policy as presented.
Second.
Thank you all. Before we begin our discussion, Pilch, is there anything you would like to, any information you would like to give us on this, these group of policies?
Yeah, thank you, President Matthews. The DJE policy on bidding procedures, I mean, these are policies we're revising, coming up. The most substantial change in this policy is to allow us a little more flexibility around our bidding procedures in relation to the bond issue. Because of the significant dollars that we will be spending with the bond, we're asking this policy to allow that if it is a bond-related purchase, that we could go up to $25,000 without a full bid process on that. Presently, our limit is $10,000. But we want to keep this bond moving quickly, and we don't want to have to be able to be required to go out on smaller purchases in the bond. The large purchases will still go out for bid, and those will still come before you for approval.
All right, thank you, Dr. Pilch. Is there any discussion from board members on this item? All right, seeing none. Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. The next item of business are the revisions to our G, that is our personnel policies, and this is an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District Six revises the G personnel policies as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, will you give us some more information on these before we take up the discussion?
Well, thank you, President Matthews. As you all are aware, we have been bringing the personnel policies that are typically the G policies to you over the last couple of board meetings. This is the next set of those policies. Most of this is cleanup, recommendations from the Colorado School Boards Association, or recommendations from our legal counsel. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on these revisions.
Any questions or comments from board members on this group of policies? All right. Well, again, for those who have been watching this regularly, we've been doing this for some time, and we get plenty of time to look at these policies, so we don't always have a lot of discussion or questions, and I don't think we have any right now. So, Ms. Crane, will you give us a vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. The next item of business is a second read and repeal for the policies GC, that's Note Page Administrative Staff, and GDMD Classified Staff, Continuing Education, around employee fellowship. And so this is an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District Six repeals policies GC, Note Page Administrative Staff, and GDMD Classified Staff, Continuing Education, Employee Fellowship as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. This is our second read, but, Dr. Pilch, is there anything further that you need to provide us?
I will just share, President Matthews, that, again, this is a repeal, where we have included this information in employee handbooks and don't see a need to have it in actual board policy.
All right. Thank you. Is there any, are there any questions or any discussion from board members? Ms. Pappas?
I wonder, Dr. Pilch, if you could just talk a little bit about that Classified Staff, Continuing Education?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Pappas. So, there is capability for staff who are hourly employees to actually apply for tuition assistance if they are desiring to pursue additional education that is in relation to their position in the district or a position they would like to pursue in the future in the district. The way the policy read was it called it an employee fellowship, which I don't think was very clear to our classified employees. And actually, anytime I had brought this policy up to folks, they were very unaware of it. So, what Mrs. Overton and I spoke about several months ago was with the upcoming repeal of this policy, that we would make sure it's in the handbook for our classified employees on how they can access these dollars for further education, and then do an employee campaign to help employees know that this is available to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, Ms. Crane, will you give us a vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Our next item of business is our school calendars. So, we need to approve some calendars for, and are going to approve calendars for both this year, coming year, and one following that. So, this is an exciting item, but we do need a motion to proceed.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District Six approves the 2020, 2021, and 2021, '22 school year calendars as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, I will give this to you before we take comments and questions from board members.
Thank you, President Matthews. As you know, we brought the calendar to you already here about a month ago, and we didn't bring it back at the next meeting on consent, because there were some questions in the community that I didn't have the answer to around the calendar. And I wanted to make sure we had explored those questions and we had answers to those questions, particularly around ending the school year a little bit earlier and starting a little bit earlier, which then impacted our graduation dates. And so we took that back to the committee, had the committee work on that, and we landed with mostly the same calendar. I think we switched some PD days and teacher release days. But Mrs. Overton is here, and I would invite her to the podium to take any questions that you all might have about the calendar.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Welcome.
Hi.
And I think our first person is Mrs. Mueller.
So, I know one of the big questions was about the end-of-the-year testing for AP and IB. And I know that sometimes in the past, students have actually had to test after the last day of class. Is that going to be the case with this earlier end of the school year?
I think it could be that we'll have some testing that they may have. It depends on whether they are going to set for particularly which one they want. But when we talked to the high school principals about it and referred to the IB Nationals, we felt like that would be something that we could do. It would be able to fit.
So, I actually have more information on this. So, AP testing will all be over prior to seniors getting out. There will be an AP physics exam, and, I mean, excuse me, an IB physics exam and an IB French exam that will occur on that Friday after the seniors are released. So, if there are students who are taking a national baccalaureate in physics or a national baccalaureate in French, they would have to come back the day after the last day for seniors. This year, there are no students in IB French to take the exam. There will be some in IB physics, I believe. It's one or the other. There will be some students who do need to come back for the exam, a handful.
Mr. Tally?
Yes. I think it's great that the calendar lines up with the colleges here. I think a lot of working parents probably really appreciate that. For the people that may be watching or maybe not be 100% familiar like myself, who sits on this or who creates this calendar?
Sure.
And, yeah, who's in it?
We have, it's a partnership between, collaborative partnership between Greeley Education Association and Human Resources or the district office. And we have district-level administrators. We have principals that sit on it, both elementary and at high school. And we have teachers from the association that sit on it at both levels. And then we have invited, we'll invite people in as we need to, to get information. So, for example, when we met this last time, we had our Director of Athletics to come in and sit with us and to help us through the CHASA experience. And so, we also have our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary, I mean, of Elementary, Wes Tuttle is on it as well. So, that's good.
Thank you.
And it's also chaired by Erin Snyder and Robert Heppertly. Both of them are here tonight. They're the co-chairs, and one from HR and one from the association.
Thank you. Mr. Haley?
Since the last time this was presented, I'm incredibly leery about saying yes to this calendar. And we found out some information during one of our visits that, you know, I taught when it was 3 when it was three days and there were big concerns that we needed people to be able to go on holiday and they would leave. And so, we elongated that and we removed the fall break. And, and I thought that that was satisfactory and I thought that was a really good thing. Since then, we've added back the fall break day and then all of a sudden, two of our largest sub-days are the Thursday and Friday prior to the Thanksgiving break. And I'll be really honest with you, I, I feel horrifically that teachers in buildings who follow the expectations are put in a position to have to bail out people when we don't have enough subs. And so, I, I don't know how that we rectify this situation, but I, I think that people are taking advantage of it and I feel badly. I wonder what's happening this Thursday and Friday with the advent of spring break.
Well, we watched this, we watched this carefully. We did get feedback from teachers from last year that said that that timeframe from October through to November was really hard for them to not, not this past fall, but the fall before. And that's really hard to not have the, not have a little bit of a break in there. Yes, you're right, we did talk about it through, giving it through Thanksgiving, giving the week at Thanksgiving, but it was something that they brought up, the committee brought up. Teachers had mentioned it before and we heard from DAC around the concern that they may have. So many people not having a break in there, it's long.
And I, I'm fine and I understand that, but, but we've done everything that's been asked of us. And then I feel as though somebody's taking advantage of us because we've been gracious and elongated it and then put it back in. So, that's my concern. I don't know what the answer is.
Sure.
But, but we need to figure out how those people aren't taking Thursday and Friday off and then go on a week-long Thanksgiving vacation.
Sure.
Because that's putting everybody else in a, in a tough spot.
You're right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from board members? Comments? I would just say, Ms. Overton, thank you and your team for, for all this work. Like so many things in this district, we don't, we don't get a chance to, thankfully, don't get a chance to, to get into the details and decide what dates or which. And we have tons of committees that do that. So, thank yours for us, for all the time that goes into this. We greatly appreciate it. Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. Thank you, Ms. Overton. Next item of business is the employee benefits renewal. This is an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the employee benefits renewal as presented and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, will you give us some information about the employee benefits renewal before we take up our discussion?
Thank you, President Matthews. Well, you know, this is, this is good news tonight. And it's always our pleasure when we can bring you good news, especially when it concerns our school district finances. So, I want to invite Mrs. Sponsler, our Chief Financial Officer, to the podium to share with you the news around our proposal for the employee benefits renewal. And I'll just start by congratulating Mrs. Sponsler and other staff who have worked on this and have brought a very, very fair and generous offer to District 6 and to you all to consider for approval tonight. So, thank you, Mrs. Sponsler, and I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you. Good evening. As Dr. Pilch said, we do have some great news to share with you tonight. Normally, this time of the year, I'm kind of going, okay, how bad is it going to be? Because as we all, have all seen, health insurance costs have continued to escalate year after year after year. So, it's so amazing to say that we do not have to have an increase next year. And the following year, we have an agreement that the increase will be no more than 4%. So, I think that's pretty astounding and we are so thrilled with that news. I think that this just demonstrates the partnership that we have with our broker at Flynn &amp; Peterson as well as the team at Aetna that we work with on a day-to-day basis. We've really become a little partnership and we work so well together. And it's become, you know, we are a valuable client to Aetna and they work well to solve our problems and our issues and we let them know how they're doing for us and it's just been such a great partnership the last several years. So, we do have benefits open enrollment and this will be going out as soon as you all approve this tonight. The open enrollment will be April 6th through the 17th. So, this is for all employees to sign up again for their benefit elections, just like they do every year. Every single employee in the district needs to do this. So, these will be hanging everywhere in the school and in the bathroom stalls so that people can remember. In addition, you have this in your packet, but every employee will get this little booklet or big booklet of information about their benefit plans and the choices that he can make. And it walks through step by step how they can enroll in those benefits. And we have several kind of one-on-one meetings, opportunities we have for employees to come in, get help, get questions answered, all of those kinds of things. So, we've kind of got this down to a science now, but assuming you all approve this tonight, then we will be moving forward with printing and getting flyers out and all of those different things. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Ms. Pappas?
Not a question, just a thank you. But as you mentioned about the partnerships, is that, and that's one of our goals in Innovation 2020, is just strengthening those partnerships. And I think it just relates to the fact that, that you've worked so hard on this and you've developed that trusting relationship. So, just thank you for that. And it is very exciting knowing.
Thank you.
Mrs. Solis?
Just thank you to Dr. Pilch, your staff, making sure that our employees are taken care of. I think we try really hard to make sure that we bring across to our employees that we care about them, we value them, and making sure that they have healthcare, I feel is a huge way of telling them, we want you to take care of yourself, we want you here, we appreciate what you do. So, thank you for all your work in making sure that we can provide this for our employees and making sure that we take care of them. And I know there's additional things that you do, even within Aetna and other programs to keep people active, you know, stress things. So, I just appreciate that whole package of looking after our employees. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sponsler, I would echo Ms. Solis's comments and also say, thank you for our taxpayers and thank you for looking out for them and thank you for continuing to negotiate such great deals for us financially. So, you and your team do a spectacular job. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other comments. So, Ms. Crane, will you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mrs. Mash?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mrs. Mueller?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Crane. That is all the business we have tonight. Our meeting is adjourned.[1627.83]